Call to order, the regular meeting of the Board of Education. Today is Wednesday, March 5th, 2025. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start off with a reading of the mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Is there an approval of the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Is there any update on questions or comments from interested citizens? No, there is not. Are there any questions or comments from interested citizens here? No. That brings us to our budget presentation. Dr. Hassler.
Will you come over here?
No problem. Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Education for the opportunity for all of us to present the curriculum and instruction budget for the 25-26 school year. Before I start, I just want to give a big thank you to the entire admin team, the department chairs, the directors, the principals, the assistant principals, who all worked very hard in assembling the curriculum instruction budget this year. A big thank you also to the business office, Patrick and his team, because there have been many visits to the business office checking in on expenditure reports and, you know, positions and things like that, and so they've been a true asset. And finally, a thank you to the CNI office team. It's been a very busy set of weeks trying to get all of the various building and department presentations consolidated into the presentation and get everybody prepared. So just a big thank you to everybody. Just an overview of the presentation. I'm going to start with some general budget highlights to hopefully kind of expedite the process a little bit in terms of consistent themes that you'll see across all the various budgets. You'll hear from each of the building principals, as well as our athletics and PE and special education departments regarding their budgets. Finally, at the end, I will kind of tie it all together of the various budgets that you're going to hear, as well as any of the other district-wide budget lines that all comprise the curriculum and instruction budget. Just a quick reminder that this budget presentation is as of March 5th, 2025. The reason why I say that is because we still have about a month worth of budget development to go before Dr. Norman presents his final budget to the Board of Education. You may have noticed that the original draft presentation that I put up on Friday, and even what's in front of you today, has changed slightly because we had two seats that were budgeted for in the special education department that had to be removed because students were going into different placements. So this is a very, very, very fluid process. So what you're hearing right now is on March 5th, you know, things continue to be examined and looked into as we prepare the final budget for Dr. Norman to present next month. So just some quick highlights. First and foremost, the budget you're about to hear is designed to ensure that we maintain all expenses for all of our programs within the school district. Our goal, you know, we are strong believers in the programs that we provide for our students, and we want to make sure that the budget reflects our ability to be able to continue to maintain all of those excellent programs. In addition to that, you're going to hear from each of the building principals at the elementary level. We have a placeholder for some updates to our into reading program. They have a new version coming out with some updates that are going to be included in the ELA textbook lines across the elementary level, as well as Envision Math. Each of the five elementary buildings have a shift in their Envision Math textbook line because previously those budgets were out of a district-wide line, and they've been moved into each of the buildings' lines. So rather than having each of the buildings talk to you about, "My math line is going up," "My math line is going up," those are consistent themes that you'll see across all the buildings. We increased our field trip budget line from a $14 per student multiplier to an $18 per student multiplier. So that's a budget line that is increasing across the board. Again, rather than each of the building principals presenting on that, that's a theme that's across the school district. And later on, you're going to hear me speak about our continued investment in career and technical education programs and our special education budget. One quick question that I was asked, that I wanted to share with the board. I was asked about where our universal pre-K program exists within this budget. Our universal pre-K program exists separately from this budget because a good portion of that program is paid for out of state aid funds, and there's actually an inter-fund transfer line that's within the general fund where the state aid monies gets deposited into, and that's not considered a curriculum and instruction budget line, so that does not appear in this budget. However, Mrs. Tureleki, when she presents Sapphire, there is a slight piece of the Sapphire budget because there are three teachers at Sapphire who, some of the supply money that is within your building goes to that program. But all of the other materials that Mrs. Tureleki presents on focuses exclusively on K-1 students within her building and not the UPK program. With that, we're going to start off with Christine Alt, the principal at Smith Clove.
Good evening. On behalf of our Smith Clove community, I thank you for this opportunity to present our proposed budget for the 25-26 school year, for your consideration. As Mrs. Markovich says it best, we serve 477 beautifully diverse students at Smith Clove Elementary, and this proposed budget reflects costs to maintain the excellent programs in place for student learning. In addition to the increases in lines presented by Dr. Hassler, the one additional increase that we have is in the line of social studies, and that increase is due to the increased costs for the resources to support student learning. As you can see by the line-to-line budget, you'll see the increases to the principals' line, the ELA math and social studies lines as presented. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to present Smith Clove's proposed budget.
The principal line across each of the buildings is where the field trip portion of the budget is included that I mentioned before, so that's what that line increase is referring to. Up next is Mrs. Tureleki for Sapphire.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Our current enrollment is 281 students, and that's the number that I used to build this budget. We do have three UPK classes in Sapphire, and we are limited to 18 students per class, so we actually have a total of 335 students, but the budget that you see is really for our 281. On the numbers, as Dr. Hassler said, under general education, that's where we use the money for supplies for teachers, and we have three UPK teachers, and we do give them the money from that line for folders and cotton balls and construction paper and all the things that the little people need. And language arts, as Dr. Hassler said, is for into reading. Perhaps we will increase on that. And the math is the additional practice books. We call that homework back in my day, but they're additional practice books, so we're paying for that. Everything else is pretty self-explanatory.
Awesome.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we're going to invite our two five principals to come on up. And up next is Dr. Morales for our Pine Tree budget.
Good evening. On behalf of Pine Tree, Mr. Martin and I would like to thank the members of the Cabinet and Board of Ed for the opportunity to share our budget. We are currently at 743 students, and as discussed previously, you'll see increases in our principal math and English Language Arts line. The other increase to note is an increase in our music line, which is for additional instruments for our students.
Great. Next is Mr. Davis at North Main.
Good evening. On behalf of Mrs. Greenblatt and the entire North Main community, 567 students would love for you to take and consider our budget. The only increase to our budget is basically an increase in the furniture line for replacing some unsafe chairs in the fourth and fifth grade. Our PE line went up a little bit, and that's just for some additional equipment for our PE classes. Thank you.
Do we have a timeline on the chairs?
Is there a holdback on furniture?
Well, we're talking about for next year. Well, as soon as the budget is, presuming the budget is passed, approved by the community, we could generate a purchase order for the 25-26 year, send that to the vendor, so it could happen as quickly as early July, I would say.
With the goal of obviously having it in place for September. Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
We generate a PO and just say, "Do not deliver or invoice us prior to July 1st."
Awesome. The goal being, obviously, a September 1st install for those, so that way they're there for the start of the school year. Yeah. We didn't have any backlog in furniture.
I'm not sure specifically about the chairs you might be interested in. Roger, we... I was going to say, we have ordered some chairs for the current year.
We ordered some for the current years for the immediate classroom that...
Right. And as far as I know, I don't believe there's any big...
Dangerous chairs.
Yes, we were planning to replace the dangerous chairs. That purchase order was already done, and as soon as we get delivery, hopefully soon, we'll be ready to...
And I'm not aware of any big backlog on the chairs or anything like that, so should have it all by September 1st.
And this budget request is to continue the rollout of additional same chairs for other classrooms?
Yeah, we made a plan to cover the next four years to get them all changed.
Mr. Buron at Central Valley.
Thank you, Dr. Hassler. Good evening, everyone. I can now introduce myself as the proud principal at Central Valley Elementary School. Thank you, my colleagues. I too am very fortunate to have a dedicated professional staff at Central Valley, including my assistant principal, Marisol, and I present to you my proposed budget. Well, first, my current enrollment is 386, and piggybacking on what Dr. Hassler shared, the bumps in my lines are attributed to the principal, the field trips, language arts for the into reading, and the math, all of that coming back to the building. You'll notice, as a highlight, all of my lines are at a decrease. I followed a zero-based budgeting approach, and I feel very confident with what I am proposing. I'll be able to support and maintain programs at Central Valley. The one area that I'm currently looking at, I know I would like to replace the meeting carpets that are in the classrooms, so I'm excited to have the opportunity to do that for our staff, for our students. Other than that, again, my budget's in front of you, and I am pleased to say that there are decreases in every area, with the exception of those few lines that were mentioned previously.
Any questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you. And up next, I'm going to invite up Mr. Berger and Mr. McGilroy. And up next is Mr. Berger. He'll speak about the middle school budget.
Thank you, Dr. Hassler. Good evening, Board of Education members, Superintendent Norman, and central administrators. On behalf of the Monroe Woodbury Middle School, I thank you for the opportunity to present our proposed budget for the 25-26 school year. In our request for your consideration, you will see a slight increase in a few lines throughout our budget. One of those lines is our principal lines. In addition to the district-wide increase in field trip line, we are also budgeting for our eighth-grade mural. I know that when the visitation committee came by earlier in the school year, it was something that we discussed. If you have not been in the building, we invite you to come check it out because it is now completed, and it looks unbelievable. We've gotten a lot of great feedback from our eighth-grade students, but our entire community. It's something that we're looking to build on as an annual thing to celebrate our eighth graders. Just a quick synopsis, because we are very proud of it. All of the eighth graders were allowed to give some input as to what the mural will look like, objects, or, you know, things that were in there, and then we had a muralist come in and take all of the input from our eighth graders and design a mural. He came in, he did the outline, and then each of our eighth graders were invited along with staff to go and actually paint part of the mural. We were fortunate that Buildings and Grounds quickly supported putting some spotlights on the mural as well, so it's really popping in the hallways, generating a lot of excitement. So we're looking to continue that and make that an annual tradition, so we're asking to increase our principal lines to support that. Our general supplies lines, slight increase, and that is due to purchasing locks for our students, for their lockers. We do give students the opportunity to bring in their own locks from home. Some of them are, they feel very attached to their own personal locks in different colors and things like that. Ours are very bland that we offer, but if you do not have a lock, it is a safety feature that, you know, for safety measures, we do need to make sure that the lockers are locked. So we do purchase a number of locks every year to ensure that for all of our students. We're asking for a slight increase of just under $1,000 for science texts. That is for an online text for our biology students. It is a six-year subscription, so it's not something that will need to be presented or renewed on an annual basis. We would revisit it again in six years. This is the same text that they are using at the high school as well, so it aligns with that. Music lines, we are entering a multi-year phase of proposal to replace some of our musical instruments. This figure that you see of just over $1,900 is to replace one tuba for next year for the middle school. And lastly, we are respectfully asking for an increase in our world language line by $2,000, and that is for our world language department to bring in an assembly for our world language students. These are our core classes that you see in front of you with the dollar figures. And then the following slide is our encore areas with a total of just over 2% increase as our proposed budget for next year.
Any questions?
Questions?
No. Mr. McGilroy.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Like my fellow administrators, I'm grateful, on behalf of the high school community, to be able to present the requested budget for the 25-26 school year. I'm going to highlight some of the increases and decreases you'll see in the next two slides. Staff development, you'll see in the principal and the conference meeting lines up a little bit due to increased professional development costs. In the general education fund, you'll see an increase due to, we have two classrooms, stagecraft room behind our auditorium and our tech room in 120. That is in need of cabinetry and shelving, in disrepair, not really fixable anymore, so we're looking to upgrade that. Text replacement, this is actually a decrease. You'll see in the social studies line, it is down substantially. That is because we were able to cover the six-year digital text contract with this year's funds, dropping the request for next year. And musical instruments, our musical line is up this year as well due to student needs. We have a few musical interest requests that you'll see in the lines. This, like the middle school, is our core subject areas, followed by our elective areas, and we overall are down 0.70% overall at the high school this year.
I have one question. When we're seeing, I know furniture is furniture, but when you're building shelves and stuff, I know when we visited the middle school and other buildings, a lot of times, our staff is sometimes actually building those units. Is that a potential possibility here, or is this all outsourced material that you're purchasing?
It is a potential opportunity. We just started those conversations. Depending on what happens with the budget, we'll kind of move forward with that, but that is a potential possibility.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next up is Brian Wilson, our athletic director, to speak about our athletics and PE budget.
Good evening, everybody. Before we get into the proposed budget, I just kind of want to give everyone a snapshot of where we're at right now for the athletic department. So we do have 73 total teams in the district, broken down, as you can see. And I also, too, want to put in there the amount of students participating in our programs. So obviously, this spring right now, we're currently in the registration stage, so I couldn't give you those numbers right now. We have a week to go before it closes. We're about 650 kids registered so far. I expect that to obviously get close to last year, but as you can see, over the last three years, we've had a decent amount of our student athletes participating in athletics. For our budget, our two huge highlights, one kind of is already in play for this upcoming spring, is the co-ed varsity clay target team. That is actually in our number of teams that we have right now, so that'll be starting, but that line is in our budget for next year. And also, our wrestling team right now is a co-ed team, which we're looking to split into a boys' and a girls' team. This year was the first year that the New York State had a girls' wrestling tournament, so we're looking to join that mission in having two separate teams, so you'll see that line as well to increase our budget for next year. As far as FIZZET goes, FIZZET, we're pretty much on par as what we were with last year.
Any questions? No? Thank you.
And up next, I have Eric Ullao, who is the Director of Elementary Special Education, Karen Jordan, who's the Director of Personnel Services, and Randy Conley, who is the Director of Secondary Special Education.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. It's an honor to be here to discuss some of the important aspects of our budget and educational priorities. In the coming minutes, we will provide you with an overview of several key areas that we are focusing on in the coming year, including the increases in PPS administration and hospitalization lines, the decreases in the CSE and Health Services line, as well as the out-of-district tuition, which has been increased by the 27 students.
Thanks. So the increases in the PPS administration line is due to IEP Direct and Regional Information Center cost being moved to that line, along with Medicaid billing costs increasing. The hospital instruction increase is due to a rise in costs of educating students who are being hospitalized, and we looked at a year-to-year analysis for that. The reductions in both Health Services and Committee on Special Ed were made after an analysis of actual expenditures in '23-'24, and a look at how much we've spent so far this year.
To be able to discuss each of the subcategories and why there is either an increase or a decrease, when we take a look at the tuition non-resident lines, those are our students that are parentally placed in private schools within the Monroe Woodbury Central School District borders, and we bill back. So, for example, if a student attends one of our private schools that's located within our borders from Washingtonville, we bill back to Washingtonville, so we get that reimbursable claim back to us. The tuition resident, when we think about BOSIs, every year, we have an increase of 3% right off the bat. So we are, we currently have projected a very large incoming kindergarten class that requires low ratio classroom structure with high management needs. So we have an increase of 27 students from year to year that will be projected to go out of district. These children, within the bundled amount, it includes the program, related services, and if they require aid support. When we think about our resident tuition, those are our students, again, that are going out of district and require more intensive services. Our chapter students, those are our family care homes students, or the group home students. We have a decrease for next year because where we previously had three additional students, we have one student that will currently be a chapter student, and as you can see, we have a 21.55% increase.
The tuition resident line qualifies for all stackable high-cost aid reimbursement from the state and from the federal government.
Correct.
The tuition non-resident line is fully reimbursed, and the chapter student line is also fully reimbursed at the school district.
Correct.
The tuition resident, when you say the stackable aid for the public and for us to know, is that at 100%? Is it at 90%? 70%?
So we have the cost for the, it's the difference between the cost of the public expense and the cost above the public expense. So it's at 68% above the public expense.
And this budget number includes the differential?
No.
This is the full dollar amount, and then it's reimbursed the subsequent year.
The following year.
After you file the stacking with state ed, you get reimbursed the following school year. So this dollar amount represents the full amount, not the reimbursed, the reduced...
Okay.
The following year.
Correct. When Patrick presents his budget on revenue, that reimbursement appears on the revenue side for the subsequent year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So each of these budgets compile into one large curriculum and instruction budget. The overall curriculum and instruction budget is broken up into six different, sorry, eight different areas. Core Programs, which is K-1, ELA, Math Science, Social Studies; District Programs, which are our various encore programs; PE Athletics; Special Secondary, which is business, student activities; and BOSIs Occupational Ed. Instructional Support Buildings category is the principal lines, supply lines, conferences, and meetings. Education Support Services is ELAIS and non-public textbooks. Instructional Management is the instructional management curriculum development, and then Special Ed is Special Ed and PPS. So to give you an idea about the overall size of each of those, Special Secondary is the largest category. Special Education is not included in this because of the size of that. This is the remaining budget lines. Special Secondary is the largest component of that because that includes the tuition for BOSIs Occupational Ed, but this gives you the breakdown of all of the ratio of all the other various programs across the entire curriculum and instruction budget. So this represents the overall CNI budget, which includes the various presentations from each of the different buildings. The Core Programs reflects the into reading increase and the math textbook increase, but you'll notice that overall, that line hasn't changed much because it's included largely with the various textbook lines. You may notice in the overall district-wide budget, there's a reduction of the district-wide math textbook line, and that reduction is the result of the buildings now budgeting for their math books. So the reduction in the district-wide line is why you saw the increase in each of the various building budgets. So overall, that's not a net increase across the entire budget. The district-wide programs, the increase there includes two main things, the various music items that were spoken about by the buildings, as well as our Family and Consumer Science Department is proposing an update in some of the appliances that are in our FACS classes. PE and physical education is, as Mr. Wilson presented. Special Secondary Programs is included in the various lines, most notably the CTEC line. The reason why I want to bring attention to that is that increase of nearly $200,000 is the result of us currently budgeting for an increase of 10 seats next year in BOSIs Occupational Ed. I've shared with the board in previous years that we've had an incremental increase of about five seats. We've seen a pretty significant increase in interest of our students that are participating in that program. So, you know, at this moment in time, we're planning on budgeting for 10 additional seats rather than the five additional seats. So that's what that increase is attributed to. The Instructional Support Line is basically the field trip increases that I spoke about. Education Support Services is AIS, ENL, and textbooks. The increase in that line, in previous years, we have some students that are in out-of-district placements in various programs who get English as a New Language services in their out-of-district placement, and that was previously included in the special education budget. However, it's a separate BOSIs line that we've created now in the Education Support Services line. That line also qualifies for state aid because it is a BOSIs line, and the students receive that service at their BOSIs placement. The Instructional Management line is flat, and the special education line is as reflected when our three directors presented.
Any questions? Well done. Thanks, Dr. Hassler, and thank you to the presenters. Okay. Next is the approval of minutes from February 19th, 2025. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And for personnel, Ms. Hock.
Thank you. I'd like to request board approval for the items listed on the personnel this evening, 8.1 to 8.17.
Any questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. And for Business and Financial, Mr. Cahill.
Thank you. I respectfully request approval of Business and Financial items, nine point one through nine point five.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Actually, I'm just going to back up for a minute, because I'd like, the Board just approved Dr. Morales as a Cabinet member, so on behalf of the Board, I'd like to invite you up to your seat at the dais. Thank you. Okay, and Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And report by our student representative, Mr. Dylan Escobar.
Hey, guys. Hope you're all doing well. My presentation today is going to be a little different than my usual ones. It's going to be less data-heavy, so I'm going to get through it a little bit quicker. I'm sure you're all so sad about that. Yeah, right now, I'm a little over the halfway mark for my time in this role, and I want to do as much as I can to make sure that the voice of students is heard, and that people are also familiar with my role as much as possible. This month, I had the opportunity to speak at an introductory meeting at the high school for ELL students. During my portion of the presentation, I spoke about my role as Board Representative, what it entails, and how these students can reach out, as well as other resources in the high school that they can use for support. I got to deliver my speech in Spanish, and it was excellent to hear that I was actually understandable to the students. I recently took the SEAL of Bileiteracy test. It was a wonderful experience, and I want to thank Mr. Vasquez for the opportunity and for organizing such an informative presentation. I'm committed to representing all students regardless of background and language, and even as policy might change in the future, I want to ensure that this position, and likewise, all student leadership throughout all the schools, is focused on protecting and uplifting our entire population. So afterwards, I had the chance to meet with Mr. McElroy and Dr. Ciara at the high school about some of the things that I went over at my last meeting. The portion of my last report on school counselors caused a little bit of a stir last time, and I wanted to discuss a little bit about that, some of the ways that we can improve in advertising, clarifications for me. And it was a very informative meeting, and I'm happy to see that what I'm discussing at these meetings is taken into consideration by school leadership and is put into action. And semi-related to my role as Board of Ed rep, I got the chance to go to the middle school for a presentation about the video production classes. But while there, I did get to speak to many middle schoolers about miscellaneous concerns within the building. And I want to schedule a meeting with the middle school administration in the coming weeks to discuss some of the things that we went over. And I want to make sure I get clarifications and understanding. It's a lot of different miscellaneous things, so I don't feel like going through every single one of them today. But it's nothing bad. A lot of it was, yeah, a lot of it was kids asking for school one day a week and pizza every day. But, you know, I'll see what I can do about that. Last thing I want to mention is that this week, I am once again visiting the K-1 schools. Tuesday, I visited Sapphire, and tomorrow, I'm meeting with Smith Clover. It's really important to me that students are always respectful of others with differences. So I am reading to them this book, We Are All Wonders. If you know the book Wonder, it is the, it is a children's book version of that, and it's a really wonderful story about a kid with a facial difference. He has Treacher Collins Syndrome. And it's really important to me that kids are familiar with students and just people in general who might have facial differences, and educating them on being respectful and kind, no matter the way someone looks. Because deep down, we all just are fantastic people, and what's on the inside is the most that, is the most important. So we had a great discussion at Sapphire about how to treat others with respect, and it was just a great time. The kids were adorable. And I'm glad to be informing students about how to respect others with differences and disabilities. It's just really important to me that these kids are getting the opportunity and learning about some of the things that they might see in the future. And that's almost everything I have for today. I hope to do more visits to the schools in the future, similar to what I did at the middle school, where I just get to discuss with students their concerns directly, rather than coming with a structured outline or area of focus. Before I go, there's one more thing I'd like to bring attention to, and I'm sure there will probably be mentioned later in the meeting. But a family in Monroe recently lost their home in a fire, and they need all the help they can get. There's a GoFundMe that was just released for the family. I don't know where it's posted right now, but if you'd like to donate, contact me and I'll send it to you. I'm sure it's probably posted on Facebook as well. But the family needs all the help they can get, so if you can, just please donate. And my thoughts and prayers are with the family as they're trying to rebuild. So, yeah, once again, if you can donate, please just reach out to me. I'll send you the link, or I'm sure it's posted elsewhere on Facebook or on one of our pages. And, yeah, that concludes my presentation for today. Thank you.
Thank you for your commitment and your focus and your passion for your role, Dylan.
Thank you.
There is a mandate now that school districts have to have a school board, a student representative, and I saw that our Orange County School Board Association is going to be having a discussion about it with some of our component districts. I think it might be a good opportunity for you to speak about your...
I would love to, yeah.
...role here.
It's actually this evening.
Well, that's great.
Not this one, but we can...
Yeah, no worries. No, it's all good. No, it's all good. Actually, I was speaking with Dory Johnson at the high school. She is on the Pine Bush Board of Education, and they're talking about introducing that role to the board. And I was giving her some advice on it and just what they can do. So, yeah, I've been in talks with other school districts about the position, but, yeah, I'd love to reach out and speak at whatever I can to educate people on the role.
Okay. I'll make the connection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is this highlighted, because I always forget this next session? Next up, reports by Board of Education Committees, Vice President Cerriella for Audit. Did I throw you two? Are you actually starting that?
Nope, that's fine. Audit Committee meeting, we have, the next one is March twenty-sixth, which is a Wednesday, at 5:00 PM. That's the only update I have right now.
Thank you. For Policy, Ms. Donahue?
We haven't met since our last board meeting. Our next meeting is next Tuesday, the eleventh, at eight-thirty AM, right here in the Central School District office, and everyone's welcome.
Thank you. For Visitation, Mr. Reynolds.
Our next meeting is Thursday, March thirteenth. Bring your own doughnuts. Four o'clock, Smith Clover, I think, and four-thirty here at the dais.
Thank you. Mrs. McClery for the Capitol Project.
No new updates. Our next meeting is Thursday, March twenty-seventh, at 5:00 PM.
Okay. Ms. Simmons, I know tonight is their school board meeting. Thanks, Suzanne.
Yeah, on the agenda, as you stated, was Governor Hokel's mandate that each school district have an ex-afficionado school board rep, a student rep, which we have, so, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Okay, reports by Board and Central Office. We will start with Mr. Cahill.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank my colleagues for their efforts and work in putting together next year's budget. I know it's a lot of work. I'm involved with it as well. And for your presentations tonight, everyone did a great job. And with that, I hope everyone has a nice evening.
Thank you. Dr. Vias.
I had a pleasure to attend Odyssey of the Mind last weekend. Nice to see you there. Eighteen participated, and middle school team, Team McCurny and Rivera, took the first place. They will be advancing to the state final in the April in Syracuse. Big shout out to Team One, and I had a pleasure to see their performance. Even though their solution did not work, they did not flinch. They continued with the whole process, and they were awarded with the Omar, it's a special award. Omar is the mascot of Odyssey of the Mind, and they've been awarded for that award. So, oh, big shout out to all the students and a great teamwork with their teachers as well. And thank you to parents who show up there, too.
Dr. Hassler.
I saw Annie. It was amazing. I saw Wizard of Oz. It was amazing. Good luck to the middle school coming up with Honk, and to the high school with Secret Garden. Was at the Prism concert. It was great. I also was at Odyssey of the Mind. I saw Dylan compete. Great job. Congrats to your team.
Thank you.
And that's it. I wish everybody a good night. Thank you to everybody once again for their support with the budget.
Thank you. Ms. Hock?
Thank you. We're in the midst of our hiring season for a twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and I'd like to congratulate a few people in our audience tonight who will be assistant principals at the high school coming September, Gina Matisse and Dylan Ferrier.
And also currently in an interim capacity. To my left, you've already mentioned Dr. Karen Morales, and I'd also like to recognize Mr. Tim Martin, who will be stepping up currently in an interim role as the Pine Tree interim principal. Thank you. Dr. Morales.
A little bit off the cuff. I would just like to thank the Cabinet and the Board of Ed for this opportunity. I'm really excited to work alongside my people, elementary administrators and teachers. You're an amazing group, and I'm thankful to work alongside of you each day. And I do want to just make a selfish plug for Annie at Pine Tree. It was absolutely amazing. Have a good night.
Just wanted to thank the presenters tonight. It's always, it's really, truly a pleasure to see, to have a face to the building, so thank you for that. And of course, those who don't have a building are special ed. So thank you. Congratulations to the new appointees. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
Thank you very much for the budget presentation. It was very informative, very detailed, as always. Congratulations to the new appointees, and welcome Dr. Morales to the Cabinet. And I'm looking, I had a blast seeing SpongeBob, the Wizard, and what was the other one?
Annie.
Annie. I can't wait to see Honk this weekend, and I'm looking forward to the high school performance of the Secret Garden. And there's just so much, so many wonderful things going on in this district. We've got so much to be proud of. Have a lovely evening and stay dry.
Ms. Simmons.
I want to reiterate the sentiments. Welcome, Dr. Morales. Congratulations to all of the new appointees. I've also had the honor and the distinct privilege of seeing all of our wonderful performers at SpongeBob and Annie and the Wizard of Oz. Shameless plug, the middle school Honk Junior play this weekend might be the best one. But, you know, I'm not biased, because my children are in it or anything. But I do encourage you all to come out and support. It is a wonderful, wonderful production, as all of the productions have been. Thank you to all of the presenters and the building administrators, meeting you on the walkthroughs of your buildings and getting to put numbers to some of the things that you do. I think it helps us to visualize kind of the needs and where you put the money that, you know, you use for our students. So that's always very much appreciated. Again, everyone have a wonderful, wonderful weekend, and please do come out to the next iteration. And good luck to the high schoolers on their Secret Garden. I will be there to see that as well.
Thank you. Mrs. McClery?
Thank you tonight to the presenters. It is always great to hear from all of the people that are behind the scenes, putting in all the work, so thank you to that. Welcome to Dr. Morales, and congratulations to the other appointees, all very well-deserved. And I know the district will be all the better for it, so thank you for that. And I had a great time at Annie, so thank you for the invitation. It was wonderful, and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, I saw Annie and Oz. They were awesome. Thank you to all the students, obviously, and the hard work for the staff and the leadership to make all that happen. Very much welcome to Dr. Morales. Thank you for stepping up. Appreciate you, and good luck to you, Mr. Martin, sticking over the seat. I'd also like to say, well done on the briefings tonight, especially an executive-level brief. I appreciate everyone who briefed appropriately and precise, and all the leadership who made that happen. I think that's better for our community to understand the budget a little bit easier than digging down to every bottom number, right? So keep it simple, so I appreciate that. Have a great night. Be safe.
Thank you. Dr. Koifman?
Presentations were awesome, although I did miss the beginning. I couldn't stop enjoying the sun outside. Thank you for the presentations. Congratulations to Dr. Morales. Congratulations to all the appointees, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Mr. Jaseb, do you have to say something?
Wonderful presentation today. I wasn't able to see them. Very sorry. But great job to all of the two-through-five students with their musical productions. And I'm hoping to see Honk this weekend. And also, congratulations to all the new appointees and Dr. Morales. I know you're new here. I'll show you the ropes. Don't worry. Thank you.
Superintendent Norman?
Good evening, everyone. I too share the same sentiments that have been expressed tonight. I do want to take pause to just really acknowledge the Cabinet and the Board of Ed. Some of these appointments, things that we talk about, there's a lot of work that takes place behind the scenes. And so when we're together, we're stronger, we're best. And tonight, we just see the full manifestation of all the hard work that goes, that takes place behind the scenes. Yes, congrats to all of our presenters and performers. That's been shared. I highlight Test Drive a School Bus event will be Saturday, April twenty-sixth. You can check our website for registration. Congratulations to the four musicians named to All Eastern Honors Ensemble by the National Association for Music Education. And I also want to highlight that we recognized Don Ricardi, cook manager at the middle school, as our most recent Crusader Calls for Applause recipient. What an amazing individual, and it's so great technology, our kitchen workers, people that sweat behind the scenes. So thank you. Thank you to all.
Thank you. Vice President Cerriella?
I just want to thank everybody. That was my favorite budget presentation ever. It was. So Patrick, you have some, the bar, the bar is raised for next month. It was, it was...
Brief but brilliant.
Brief but brilliant. It was not too brief. It was almost thirty minutes exactly. I timed it when it started. But it was well done. You hit the highlights. Really great job. Appreciate that. I also want to recognize Little Broadway at Monroe-Woodbury. We have some of the best kids and theater programs around. I'm looking forward to Honk. If I can make it there, I might have a schedule conflict, so I'm going to try. And then, obviously, the high school presentation. And I want to welcome Dr. Morales and all the new appointees, and wish everyone a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like there's so much to say, but there's been so much said also. But I agree that excellent presentation. Thank you. It was well done, and I think very easy to understand all the different pieces. Personnel, I do want to comment on Dr. Morales and Mr. Martin for your flexibility and support in supporting some of the changes that were approved tonight. And congratulations to Ms. Matisse and Ms. Ferrier. And also, I just wanted to acknowledge that we are coming out of Black History Month, and I recently had the opportunity to watch your video where you visited with the Smith Clovers, and it was a very moving interaction that I watched. So thank you for that. And again, thank you, Dylan, for your commitment. It's very noted.
Thank you.
And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn into an executive session to discuss Personnel.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Have a good night.